The the.
Oh, we've had the guarding the marketing taxes. We just need to make sure our.
Yeah, I'm bringing the um the revenue of your uh tour for I don't know what what the term is. Best thing I've ever worked with the the sure revenue. And as always, it's supposed to be such a cheap like about we need to have our ordinance.
Like one of them.
But um I can send that to you. You can craft it and stuff. But one thing we did.
Are we?
Change your life?
So y'all start talking about people.
Go ahead and call the uh May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three Economic Development Committee meeting come to order. Time is now seven o'clock. Uh let's power heads for the application. Steve, do you want to give the application?
Yeah, I appreciate you asking, Mr. Chairman. I've been talking loud and loud in the door. Let's go to the Lord again. We uh we all of a sudden, as we know it, Lord, we just thank you for your forgiveness. All we have views is asked for. He's asking you to be with us tonight and guide us and leaders. And Lord, we just we appreciate all these folks here tonight to take the time to uh to care about the county. And we we lift up all our family members. I know Mr. Costin has some family members he's been dealing with. Uh we know it's hard sometimes. And Lord, we just lift our knees up to you as well. We ask all these things in Jesus Christ, oh Lord, say.
Amen.
All right.
Politically, this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll uh entertain a motion for the virtual agenda.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, Sigby, saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? If you're prepared. Next item on the agenda is minutes. Mrs. Zodi, you said that you had some technical difficulty.
Right. You said they're gonna be. Oh, that one's the best one to me.
Okay. Uh next item on the agenda is the Tyson closing meeting supervised work.
Um uh Mr. Costin attended that meeting uh yesterday at the uh hosted by the CRC with Senator, I'm I'm sorry, Secretary of Law, the Deputy Secretary of Agriculture as well, um folks with V Dax. Good meeting. I I think one of the big takes out of that is Mr. Costin spoke and pretty much doubled down on what Nodaway had to offer. And uh there was twice during that meeting where lady from V Dax and the secretary itself were very appreciative of what Nodaway has to offer. And um so I think one of the bigger takeaways from out of that is is that there's, I believe, serious consideration for something to land here tomorrow weekend. And um anything that you want to add to that?
Well, I just I just note um uh to what Mr. Worf said, we took uh uh bound copies of the presentation that you all have seen. We sent to the governor, but we bound them up, gave them to them, gave them so they had something in paper. Uh in addition to the folks that were there from V Dax, there was also the same representative that came out to the site meeting, uh V E D P. And um they really encouraged, and I know that Mr. Zodi has done this, they really encouraged that we keep up to date the site inventory uh that they maintain across the state. And then she said something very, very, and she said, now that I've seen the one in Nodaway, it's going to be a little bit more at the top of the list because she's seen it. She knows what the capabilities are. So as we go forward and we identify some other sites, um we probably need to say, hey, come on out, you know, let us buy you lunch. Let us show you a couple of these these sites and everything. Um they really did stress having sites under your control. So we've got really good properties in the community. How much is under our control is another thing. So um once you all start identifying locations, then we might want to make some overtures to some landowners to see if they would be fitting partnering up with us on something. But it was a positive meeting. We found out from Mr. Johnson, Trent Johnson, who's kind of become the, he's out of Lunenburg. He's kind of become the the point person for the growers um that they had communicated to about ten
Yes.
different um integrators, companies that some people had never even heard of before. Um and so they wanted to exchange lists to make sure that uh uh everybody that uh the secretary and all the economic development folks were talking to, that they had hit the same people that Mr. Johnson and vice versa. So um very positive, but uh Mr. Worf said double down, you know, double down on our um on our 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 site. Also doubled down on, we're willing, we see this as a regional situation, that we don't care where it lands as long as everybody has a a customer to take their stuff to. But also had a sidebar with V Dax and said, you know, they talked about wanting to be central. And when you think about it, if you look at the market where the product was going to short pump, we're more central.
Yep.
Even though we're on the eastern edge of the region, we're really more central to the tri-cities in the Richmond metropolitan area. So uh you know, if the growers want to bring their product to Nodaway, it gets processed and then taken out. That's the scenario. We're more so.
Well, in in current form, didn't the secretary at one point mention too that having three more condensed together was probably more ideal? Which kind of puts Nodaway leading there. I mean, if, I mean, Nodaway could land all three. We have rail spurs from all three towns.
Right.
And uh you won't need a rail spur for that grain mill. And they recognize region wide, our biggest holdback is natural gas.
It's always been. So just ca- just curiosity. So um you still looking at, I mean, even we got things moving. It's going, this is a two or three year process. And if you, if you, you know, if you time of construction and.
Farmers had pointed that out too, that they they they've kind of got a deadline of twelve to eighteen months. And what they were hoping for was that if it's a two-year wait before these guys tear their houses down after a year, if the notification can be can get out, then that gives them some hope to hold on.
I got you.
Uh some of my know picked up, but it's only a handful of them picked up some turkey flies. But it's not ideal because there's some changes into the uh setup that they gotta make. And even though you think it's birds, but it's not, it's different. Yeah, it's a whole different setup. So it's um there's a lot of that. But like I said, it was very positive. I saw when Melanie Foster sent that information out, she obviously got it from Trent, but she sent it out to everybody the day too. It's on the information is the integrators. They've contacted them already. So good meeting. Uh Trent is uh Trent needs to be recog- recognized, you know. I mean, you know, when you get into these things, you don't know who's doing what. They got their own person on agenda and stuff like that. He's just been very forthright the whole time. And he's a good dude, very good dude.
I'm making a note that I'll go ahead and send out to everybody here what Melanie sent out.
That's that's very good news. This is another meeting plan.
Well, well, right now they're absorbing this. They're gonna probably make contact. There was some discussion about some funds. And I'll be honest with you. I I I think the comment I made was like, you know, whether our parents told us or we told our kids or I don't tell my grandkids about reaching for the stocks. So I'm gonna reach for one now and throw a hail Mary. Does the state have three, four, five hundred million dollars that they can uh break out debt service over this region of all the counties or what do they do it and throw this thing together on themselves? And they were like, oh, oh, they got the money back here. So it wasn't crazy, but I think the uh the figure for all of it, correct, from what I'm telling you, was about four fifty. Or was that just a process of plan?
I mean, that's just a process.
About four hundred fifty maybe.
They keep talking, making comparisons to um newly started plant in Omaha.
Mm-hmm.
Then they talk billions.
Right.
When they talk about that plant, billions with a B.
Well, one of the other items that I did touch on there was, but I kind of been hearing a little bit of fear, you know, from amongst other counties as well about their concern about what the um concerns about like non-speaking, non-English speaking crowds that may be drawn to work in these places. However, that's that's not the case. And that came clearly came out. Um number one, we said that, you know, wherever it lands in this region, whoever it lands, it could help all the schools because all the schools have a climate conflict. You know, it's any families that move here that's going to help that. But on the backside of that, this is not people throwing chickens and shovels around. It's a it's a lot of technologically advanced equipment in these facilities now. And these are paying jobs. So it's not like what was built seventy years ago in no means. I mean, this is, and we mentioned about possibly bringing specific training into like, whether it's the A N T C or South Side Community College with some courses like that. And a lady from Lunenburg spoke up and said that they were actually looking at some of those type of technological integrated jobs into their school system as well too. So.
That was Mr. Johnson, Trent's wife.
Oh.
Sitting right next to her.
No, 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 the lady that was standing up. She had a Lunenburg County.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, yeah. I think she, was she their um extension agent?
Might have been.
Yeah, might have been.
So, yeah, it was very good meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just uh just spitballing here. Um I occasionally look on a on on, you know, Realtor to see, you know, what what properties are for sale and things, you know, like like everyone does. Um and I noticed a couple of weeks ago that one of these farms uh that we're talking about has been for sale for about a year now. And the price recently, you know, decreased significantly uh when Tyson made their uh made their um the uh announcement. Um would it increase the um uh uh the package if the counties were to get together and purchase part of that that part of the operation as well? At least, uh you see what I'm saying? So.
Yeah, it's a four million dollar, and they have eight chicken houses, right? I think it's about eight or seven.
You know more than I do. Why just uh?
Fair enough, four million. I think you're asking for something around there. Um but they've already got the houses and all that, so.
Are you are you asking to purchase a chicken house and put it in operation? That's what I'm hearing.
Well, I'm I I I'm I'm just, I'm just, like I said, I'm just spitballing. I'm saying, you know, if we're offering a package, would it be a more enticing package to a company if we said that, you know, as part of this, there's also this end of the operation as well?
Now, now you can get your chicken business, right?
They have a lower price here by locals, right? Two dollars a chicken. Come on, man.
I guess the follow-up uh what Mayor said was you could sell it in my mind as operational farms. You know what I mean? Everybody's kind of in a holding pattern right now. But if there's one that's sitting vacant that nobody owns or somebody owns, but they're not planning on operating it.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas if the county owned that and it's ready to be opened, we're just waiting on the chickens or, you know, chicks to show up.
Absolutely.
That that might be a little more than would they be interested in buying that farm?
Exactly. Or having some sort of a different conversation with that owner if they're still trying to sell it. Um partnering with them in a different way. So we're partnering with these other farmers saying, hey, this is so what basically what is the conversation that we're having with that one, that farmer who's trying to get out of the business and trying to sell it at the at the same time?
Um so you're trying to, and basically you're trying to keep them here too, though.
Well, the uh the the operation at the end, if the farmers didn't want to get out of it, is been hit with the hit with this and is forced to basically address the cut.
Not saying the county wants to be a real estate agent, but perhaps some of these meetings you're going to, John, is there anybody that's looking at purchasing farms?
Well, not purchasing, but leveling houses. They talked about it yesterday.
Yep.
Um and you're talking about second, third, and subsequent generation.
Yeah, the the reason that they talk about leveling houses is because, if I understand it correctly, the cost to keep the house up and the taxes. Ready to go in in the taxes. But the cost of keeping the house ready to receive and and, you know, raise a product. If they don't get it, it's cheaper not to house it and cut the ex- cut the expense on it.
Yeah.
The other thing you uh you're looking at there feels maybe it's like, depending on the size of the operation location, if if it didn't work out, you take the houses down, but you also have a uh um site, another site where you can develop.
What'd you say it was, Greg? Eight acres?
Yeah, actually, I missed the uh maybe I should be a Realtor. I had it for my third listing. At one point five, it's a hundred and twenty-five acre lot. It's on uh twenty twenty West Patrick Henry Drive. And I'm sure it's, you know, why not? Yeah, and let's see, this is, it's been on, it's been on the market for three hundred and thirty-one days. Goes with the house, you're going to do that. But it looks like um there's, let's see, very details. How about if I send this to you guys? But I mean, just real briefly, uh the houses, let's see, there's a poultry, eight house poultry farm previously growing six week birds for Tyson. Um the houses are sixty-three by five hundred square feet, built in uh twenty seventeen. Uh they're forty-third acres and four generators, rodent controllers, whatever that means, eighteen thousand gallons of propane, the one two.
They're they're going to the propane. Um.
I'll send this out.
Yeah, what what was the acreage?
Hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, hundred and twenty-five.
Four sixty.
Yeah, twenty twenty.
Three sixty.
Yeah, twenty twenty West Patrick Henry.
The look.
It's not far from the Tyson plant.
Right.
Be two miles from the county line. Speaking of Tyson plant, what's the plant with that feedmill? Still in operation, shutting it down?
They want them shut. Want them shut down.
Shut down, yeah. One, sorry, shut down for a break from the meeting yesterday. But you know, Tyson has basically said they are not going to sell to a competitor. Like chicken competitor. They would consider turkeys. But they will not sell to.
So if y'all want to get hurt, we're going to buy it as a plant operation, then.
And there was even, uh there was one gentleman that raised the issue of could the state not go in basically exercise eminent domain and then turn around and sell it to another vendor? And that one got shot down because um apparently there was a Supreme Court ruling, Greg more prepared than I am, that you can't do eminent domain for economic development. Because they they see this sort of like, now you're picking winners and losers type of type of situation. Um if you needed it for a road, if you needed it for a park, if you needed it for a school, how about it? But not business.
And the other thing is um there's also the issue of displacing people, uh residences, you know, may might be a low-income neighborhood or something like that. So you're completely just dis- disenfranchising just a group of people. So that's.
So Tyson still owns the building? At what point does that vacant building become blighted in the county?
Yeah, that depends on that depends on their.
Building code, it'd be building code.
You talking about feedmill?
Uh, right, yeah, whatever that one on uh.
That's that was my question. It looks like it's still halfway in operation.
You need to look at the, but Chairman, I think, didn't Amelia County take part of that? I don't even know what's in Nodaway, though. That's right.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think the one on three sixty is in Nodaway, the one on three oh seven.
Yeah, the hatchery is in Amelia.
No, I see.
But if you come down eastbound on three sixty, you go under the viaduct past three oh seven. It's maybe a quarter mile, two or three eighths of a mile is the county marker. Now, that doesn't mean that the line runs straight across three oh seven, but if it ran straight across, that would roughly grab that hatchery. But leave the feedmill in Nodaway too, so.
I don't know, Chairman. I won't in that, I won't in that board then. But I think many of it didn't go down.
That's fire response, which, you know, is is very county line oriented. That's encouraged first, too. So it's got to be in Nodaway County. The hatchery is in Jeter Soul first, too.
Okay.
Because I know when they had that problem, what, three, four years ago, we went out there, Burkeville and crew got toned. And then when they got on scene, they called Jeter Soul immediately. So the Jeter Soul had to cross county line and come in and help. But that brings up a good point. How long after it sits there? Does it become?
Right. And can that be used to entice Tyson to?
Well, if it's a little bit blind, then it's got to got to come down and bring it up to go. Or they got to sell it, you know, that's.
Right, to set salad is what I'm.
Yeah.
There's there's state language on blinded and dilapidated structures. And that was drafted really to get rid of the drug houses and stuff like that. We used to do that. Uh I did that quite frequently inside of it. It'd be helpful for us.
Yeah, but don't don't we need to draft a blind ordinance?
Well, well, that's, we need to look at the um building code and see what it says there because there the language might be structured so that it wouldn't include blind, you know, because it's a danger to the community. Yeah, that's part of it. It's just it's unsafe structure.
It couldn't become blighted. Yes, well.
Yeah, no, I I agree.
It's not take years for it to become blighted.
Oh, yeah. And that's that's why this was written in the state kind of like, which was written to resolve these cases and cities and stuff. But I agree.
What about the angle of dangerous property? I mean, it's an industrial site if they abandon them. Leave it sit for six months, kids start going over there. You know what I mean? Could you use that angle?
Let me look at what we have.
But does the county actually have a dangerous building?
That's what I mean.
Also, we need to be very careful. We're we're not perceived as pushing the wall, you know, to chase this, chase this too.
Chase the dream.
I'm I'm just curious because it, I don't, I can't, I don't know. I'm getting vibes from the county officials from Amelia that they will pull out of A N T C out here.
Right.
So how much acres do we have there? Now, I know that's in Nodaway, right?
Yes.
I say I know, but and then I have.
I have it somewhere, Steve.
Is it, is it many acres, two acres?
I think, I think, but I could look it.
Right. Because that's going to be a problem too. I mean, not a problem, that might be something that we can utilize sometime on us for something.
I might be completely off, but for some reason, twenty-four is in my head or something.
Maybe I look. I know where it is.
It could be me thinking about that.
Trent, see uh or I guess David's building is.
We got a cabin. Next thing you know, we 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 leave that building sitting there. It's gonna be blight. It's on the building. Because I mean, somebody has, even if the school was to pull away and surplus it, somebody's got to cut the grass and team the right. You involve with that, you know, that's.
Valuable order when we adopt it.
Right.
Well, let's see, uh where is it? The the?
It's the three sixty corridor up in the northeastern corner.
Okay.
I'm trying to try and get to it myself. Trying to.
Going going back to uh Bill, I feel, I see how it's thinking. This is something we got to be thinking about, you know, um investing in investing in vacant chicken houses without an integrator with taxpayers' money. Do you think we would get criticism without?
Probably.
All right, right.
That's why I said that all of the cameras invested in itself.
But there there is the flip side of that. If this is a hundred and twenty-five acres for one point five million dollars, is that not a fair cost for land that's got a major highway, three sixty? And a rail road is, I mean, the railroad runs, it's got to run right through the edge of that property. Or is it on the up? No, it's on west side, so it's on that same.
Cost is so high is not because of the problems. It's because it got three fourths, how many chicken house? Eight. Eight. Say that, three hundred dollars off. Not more than that, man. I don't what they are. I think I know who owns that.
This one?
Well, but I guess my question would be is it's worth seeing what their bottom dollar is. The county talks about, we have no land that's open, that's ready. And the state's asking us for, show us land that's got rail access and has highway access.
Well, if it's.
Here it is.
Railroad running right in front of them, right?
Yeah.
Between that property.
It's a highway, yeah.
Thank it is.
Yeah, it was not a spur that, just. You know what I'm saying? It's not a spur. The spur stops back at towards P. Mark.
They can add, they can they can clip a spur, okay?
They can add a switch and then I'll let it.
It's switching. That's what I'm looking for.
I mean, they got one over there at Tyson's plant.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of the bigger picture of, we're not buying it necessarily for the chicken houses, but the that would be great if someone comes in and says, yes, we're going to do this. Well, we've got eight chicken houses. It's up for sale.
But it's own agriculture, man. So if someone wants to come in and put a manufacturing plant on, they have to be willing to change his own.
Will the county shoot that down? You see, I mean, you sound saying.
That's one thing, you know, it's just, any of those processes, we get, you know, if you're taking that, that's, you got to be willing to do that without hesitation. So.
You got Greg trying to go out and identify properties that are owned and how much acres there is? Hundred and twenty-five is quite a clip of acre.
And just a, just a larger conversation I'm just looking at, you know, large tract land that come up for sale, you know, being willing to uh to invest in, say, for uh industrial parks and things like that.
Be a good place to put a racetrack out there, Mr. Ball, and sell sauce.
God, the sauce is bitter.
You guys need some more time or?
Yeah, we I we can bring it up. I can get into the commission revenue records. I found the track. I mean, it's right, it's even the street says Fog Tech Road.
Mm-hmm.
But I can't get it for some reason. I'm having trouble getting.
It'll show up on another one.
Just kind of, the address, it took a while for the addresses to. I'm looking at acreage seventeen. Some teams.
So it decides for.
Who's the minimum that chicken place want? What is forty, isn't it? Thirty? No, I'm talking to Prosser and Plan, the hatchery. What'd she say the shortest?
Thirty to forty.
Thirty.
I got this one, one forty.
Okay.
Pull that one up. That's the one I just said. This is what I think is. I got one forty, Fog Fog Tech Road Crew, seventeen acres.
We just sit on it for like five, ten years, just to feel down here.
That'd be another.
It'd be another wild one.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if uh if Amelia's pulling out, then of course this is all, you know, school board uh discussion. But if uh if Amelia's pulling out of that, uh have we heard back from the school board on the um Burkeville School usage?
I haven't heard nothing.
Okay.
Uh Greg, were you going to reach out to them or?
Yeah. School board.
School board about the uses of school.
I would, no, no, I haven't, not yet.
How many acres is that? I think that's eight. Thank you.
Solid there. We then open that up for a lot of possibilities. Because that's a nice building, seventeen acres.
I know at one time, B C B R was interested in it for treatment. See, that's a state by county. You wouldn't get any tax revenue. You see what I'm saying? But B C G R was was very much interested about giving, fixing it so they could teach trades to uh some of their residents. Because right on the road, they can bust them up at.
Yeah.
You would talk.
No, no, nobody was, they were just interested and said, hey, could, if this stuff comes up for sale, can we know about it?
Twenty acres.
Twenty acres for Burkeville.
Is that before they did the uh the extension with the uh?
Expansion, don't it? They still ain't got places for therapy.
No.
They got more for housing, but they still have stuff like to teach people how to well, teach people how to, they still don't have a lot of them. So this, and it's right on up the road.
Well, there's a whole uh feeder.
Feed place. I thought maybe I planted mustard seed sometimes to stand a note. But I don't know what the school's doing. I don't. I I've heard, where where I got that information was from the chairman of the Amelia County Small Keys, County Board of Supervisors, nothing new.
Quarter acre that he says. See if the school board can get an answer on.
Okay.
I know.
When do they meet?
It is seventeen days.
Seventeen days, right, big blocks.
I assume the county's plans.
What do y'all think about just keep?
I would keep the Tyson thing in business and keep that on on agendas.
Yep.
What's that?
Keep that on agenda.
The Tyson closing.
Yeah, and then and then add on, you know, full A land. Land for sale, I might put it.
So maybe just for next month, let's say Tyson closing and then an update instead of meeting such and such.
Kids and their confusion.
All right. Let's move right along. Greg, did you hear for four? We'll just move that. We'll drop meeting May twenty first, twenty twenty three and just put update. We'll keep that item on the agenda.
Okay, for the Tyson closing?
Yeah, for next month. Um. Fifth item on the agenda, Mayor Muskovic for the county E D C's strategic plan update.
So the subcommittee has not had a chance to meet, but we can we can still discuss that if if we want. What I, ma'am?
Why don't we just set up a time tonight so that we can meet so we'll know.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, no, I didn't. That's entirely my fault. There was a it was a very busy.
Well, we won't blame it. So so mayor, the um, so I'm spitting ball back at you.
Sure.
So sorry that I missed last meeting. But I did. I came in here and before Buddy erased everything, I started reading and strength and weed and things like that. Um, I didn't see that on it, which I think is a strength of crew, that four sixty is the is the only town from Waverly. All the way to even though he goes through Appomattox, four sixty, crew is the only town that four sixty goes in the middle of the town, right?
Yeah, that's different.
To me, that's a strength. But you know, I mean, Bob has his crew, Bobby five has his work, Bob has Blackstone.
Sure.
Right. I just thought maybe that should be added on. They wanted to go around.
Exactly right.
Follow this. We had a public meeting. People turn out and say we don't want it to go around. We want to come.
Man, I did something, but we finally lost.
They lost. That's right. That's right.
Buddy, do we have the?
Yeah, buddy, I want one.
That's me playing Monday morning quarterback.
Do we have the capability to put a PDF on here if I email it to someone?
Probably so.
Okay. Excellent. I'll I will send you.
Be searching for things to drink.
You that's.
Me?
You're fast as one hour now. That's just that's just so. That's completely.
I'll be clicking little stuff and F B I be down there like, what you looking at?
So what I did in preparation for for, oh, let me, I'm sorry. Did everyone get a copy of this?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, what I did in preparation for for the subcommittee meeting was put together a document that I'll. Once Buddy gets back, I'll I'll send a stem and see if we can throw it up on the on screen there. Let me find it on my.
I think he may have stepped across the street or some water.
Okay.
We just might have to use this.
Okay, for sure. Well, I took all of this and I. Um, organized, categorized it. Um, into basically four focus areas and let me get on and. And it's.
You learn how to move that camera so we can fill out a camera.
All right, or not, I am much better off camera. Uh, so basically the. Focus areas and and you know, this is just a just suggestion, so feel free to to. Agree or disagree or. Orange burger?
I can I can read that. It says faces green. I thought you hate people criticized. When I was in school, I accepted takes those beautiful pictures from. I sent it for hours. That was a week.
He's got the same issue I do. He always writes like on an angle. I can't say once he's up there writing and I'm not.
Now, Mr. Rourke, if you're going to perform the pilot commission meeting. Dr. Lewis brought up the fact that the high school is starting or the school system is starting internships and things like that.
Yeah, I believe they mentioned that in the past, but they were planning on adding like two per year. But the discussion was what it was gonna be. I think one like past year or something like one was culinary or something like that. Some of the heavier trade stuff. Had no had landing like electrical plumbing carpenter and stuff like that. So. It may be it may be maybe good to get what they may be planning to do.
I can make a jump. But if they're starting a puller program that's based on the west western Virginia Community College system, which is just not staying.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Apparently it's comparable to the CIA, the Culinary Institute of America.
Okay, so the basically the four focus areas that I just came up with based on, you know, just trying to categorize all these uh, these great things that we came up with. Um, are investing critical infrastructure, cultivate a high quality of life, foster a diverse tax base and educate, develop, attract and retain talented workforce. Uh, and then I the the next steps are to and I. Threw in each of the each of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats under those four focus areas. And the next steps are to just uh, come up with goals for each of those focus areas based on those strengths, opportunities, weaknesses and threats. So basically, um, the the idea is by creating goals and strategies, um, how do we lean in on and support the strengths? Uh, how do we overcome the weaknesses? How do we tap into opportunities and how do we mitigate against the threats? Um, and it's much easier if, again, if we have, if you guys can all see this, I had pronounced for the for the meeting. Uh, but I did not bring any with. Oh, and I also had a question. Is this within our scope? Yes or no? Wouldn't wouldn't been the first question. Because some of these things may be outside of the scope of this group as we as we go through the as we go through the list. So just just looking at the that focus area one, uh, investing critical critical infrastructure. The the actually Buddy's coming in here now, so let me send this to him and. Any, well, what are what's everyone's thoughts on those?
Exactly. We would start like applying for grants and stuff. What will identify what structures to invest in first, what? The most the most critical needs on what areas more critical needs and then identify.
Right, so it would. Well, we we would. I'm sorry, repeat that?
So identifying what infrastructure is the most correct.
Right.
Needs attention first.
Exactly, based on the strengths, opportunities.
Right. And then from there, we start looking for funding sources.
Right. Well, I well, from there, we we create goals and then based on those goals, uh, however one proceed with it. Buddy, I sent you an email with a PDF. Is it possible to throw that up on the screen there?
I can say I'm gonna have to bring, you know.
Oh, look at that. We are very high tech. Okay, so like I said, if you scroll to the top right there, what we have are, you know, creating goals and strategies that lean on and support this uh, strengths. Overcome weaknesses, tap into opportunities and mitigate against threats. So focus area one is investing in critical infrastructure. Um, and the strengths identified from the from the list that we we came up with last week and and threw in there. Uh, strengths related to infrastructure are the access to airport, town of Blackstone Water and a public transportation backs. And some of these are fall under multiple categories, which you'll see later. Weaknesses are a lack of natural gas, affordable housing, lack of recreational facilities, public transportation. Um, I'm not sure why this is engagement, but so those three shouldn't have made it on there. That's not really. Critic. Well.
That is a problem.
That it it is a problem. It shouldn't be under under critical infrastructure.
Yeah, you're right.
Um, and also, these three, are they necessarily within the scope of this group especially? Those were the ones. Um, well, that's, you know, that's a question we need to ask about all this. Opportunities, uh, for barfoot. Uh, town of Blackstone Water proximity to the various colleges and universities and entities. They can storefronts in central areas of town, walking communities, second floor view apartments and hybrid trail. And threats are lack of affordable housing, food agency water system, lack of broadband, lack of medical and care and urgent care, lack of infrastructure, excessive light and lack of prepared sites. Um, and then we go into the into the next focus area. Uh, thoughts on the way this is set up in 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 the next step? So like I said, the next steps are to create goals and strategies. Uh, to. Come up with that.
Buddy, could you scroll back up to the top?
And I'm willing to go with whatever direction the the group wants to go or if we want to just let the subcommittee take the reins.
Well, I I'm asking, I missed the meeting. I apologize.
Sure.
And Chairman, I need you to kick in, but I didn't see, I mean, to me, credited schools is a weakness, not having them. You.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
And I know we get to the point where do you cross the school line? You see what I'm saying?
Sure, okay, let's 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 scroll them because that that does hold on the road.
Keep in mind that and I hear people talk about people who don't know.
Right.
And should know. Don't know, but should know. They talk about our school. We have very good schools.
Right.
Let me tell you what has happened. The kids were out of school two years with COVID. Even the best of schools are having problems because a lot of kids were that and I have a granddaughter who's very starved. But she was at home. She decided that she wasn't going to study like she should. And that's what happened to a lot of kids.
It's almost like they lost two years.
They lost two years. So they'll they'll be back. Not only has always had the schools and different smart kids.
Okay.
Not one, not a way. Southside Virginia.
If we want to talk about the the schools, if we can scroll down to focus area number four.
Okay.
Um. I can also print.
Oh, you you have different focus areas.
Right, yeah, so we have four focus areas. Focus area four, like like you wrote up there, educate, develop, attract and retain talented workforce strengths. Uh, we mentioned the private schools and the relationships with federal state officials. Um.
He's printing.
Oh, wow, okay. I'm gonna go ahead and get her back a copy. How many do we have? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Count yourself.
I've got it on my. Okay, I'm just going ahead. Entry. Okay, it's printing while you talk. Okay, excellent. Um, weaknesses are, we identified workforce technical specialized in trades, anchor businesses, um, regulated. Regulatory obstacles, um. Lack of branding and sales and pitching for, you know, developing and attracting uh, some of the workforce. Um, and some of the opportunities are again proximated to the to the universities. Um. And if we can scroll down just. No, you're fine. Uh, and then threats are lack of educational opportunities, uh, uh, some of the entrepreneurship. Uh, opportunities that that we don't really have the the knowledge, the capital and the inventory. Uh, credited education systems, lack of infrastructure and low median income slash poverty. Those are all threats to educating, developing, attracting and retaining a talented workforce. Some of those are also also fall under. So like I said, there's some overlap. They fall under quality of life. They also fall under diverse tax base. And you'll see that once we once we all get the get this.
It's a lot. It looks overwhelming, but if if you sit down and stick with the strategy, stick with the plan and follow it and continue pushing forward, we're gonna start coming out.
Right, exactly. So this is this is basically a way to take everything that we've done to categorize it under these focus areas. Um, and then then start to create goals, goals based on it. But I guess the the main question is, do we like this focus areas for the for the strategic plan?
I do. Just just for me, I like what we're seeing so far.
Okay, other thoughts?
Um, question for you.
You don't have the you don't have the community college out there as far as opportunities.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, we could definitely definitely throw the community college in there as well. Great catch.
We have under opportunities, you know. College education. Uh, but then we have first thing on threats is lack of educational opportunities. Is there really a lack of educational opportunities? Or is there a lack of marketing of those educational opportunities? I think this was supervisor Vaughn was trying to get at was we have good education in the area. We're just terrible at putting out what it is and putting the right people in the right program.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Well, you've got a whole lot more experience in schools than I do, but it seems like we have programs, but. The people that we're putting in the courses are not the people that need to be in the courses. They're the ones that.
But that market must be the market must be in the schools to the parents, getting into the children to put the children up for those classes at the school to offer them. So.
I guess what I'm saying is is after hearing what he had to say was, instead of us passing the school itself. Maybe we need to work cool, you know, together and say, look, you guys have got great programs, but how do we market these to the community?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we can market it as as a strength if the school has a strong enough focus on it and it's getting out to the community. Yeah, so yes, absolutely. One can parallel if the initial one is done correctly. Yeah. And so, yeah, the encouragement should be that.
In addition to its marketing, especially with the um, the higher education. Um. Is there enough access to these educational opportunities and are we marketing the roads to the access? Um, so for example, there's, you know, the automatic acceptance to any of these these state universities after you complete a two years of a. At community college. Um, and you know, are we marketing that within the within the school system? Um. So that students can, you know, do two years of community college, then finish off their, you know, four year degree at one of these these state universities. Uh, or is that not being marketed? Is you know, they they save a lot of money that way. Um, how are we? You and but again, is that within our scope or is that more of? Um, the the school board's. Responsibility, you know, where do we as the economic development committee want to? How far out do we want to go and where do we want to draw that line?
I guess me personally, I. If we're gonna focus on universities and what is that secondary education colleges. Maybe we need to look at making those more available for our citizens. So one might say, well, how would you do that? Is there any transportation going to Alberta? Is it running enough?
Every day. Yeah, you talking you talking about to the community college?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a lot.
One out in Keysville.
Yep. We're in Buckingham. We're going, you know, I would say, what, eight counties where it's where it's served?
I mean, I know that it's going like Farmville, Amelia, that kind of thing, but what I'm getting at is I moved to the county in December of two thousand nine. But I had no idea there was daily bus service to Alberta or Keysville.
Well, I think the colleges tell everybody when they come and apply that that there is transportation available and from where and what time at the pickup spots when you apply to those colleges.
But that's the thing, that's a strength, having bats. But that's the thing. That's a strength of Babs. And they've got a network.
Yes.
But how can we help them market it to the 15,900 citizens of Nottoway County? But that's where I'm saying the economic development could be doing a better job.
Well, like the places like STEPS, social services, I believe crossroads, uh, people aren't seeing reasons, all of them are already pushing those items out in case people need transportation. In cases, in, in certain cases, like if it's handicap, Babs buses, Fab buses, all of them are equipped with that in case like, uh, PSR can't take somebody out. There's wheelchair bound or something like that that you sort of, stuff like that. So it, it's out there. I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know how, how much more you can market that. I mean.
Well, my thoughts, my thoughts are, is that we do what's required of us to advertise. But we don't have, we don't have the wherewithal or the staff member that would explore social media or find reasonable, um, a reasonable way of, of getting into paper ratings. We just, it, it, I don't, I mean, Babs is the best kept secret in the world.
And that's what I'm getting at. I'm, I'm not trying to bash them. I'm saying if they're there and they're doing this, well, are we missing the boat because we're saying there's not enough educational opportunities is a threat to the county's economic development. But clearly the education is there. You've got Virginia Tech, you got Longwood, you got Virginia State, you got Hampton Sydney, you got Southside Community College. Um, what's the one out there in the Petersburg area? John Tyler, not John Tyler.
Richard Mayans, they did.
I mean, you see, there's a lot of schools. If there's transportation going to them, then we really can't put a threat of lack of educational opportunities. The opportunity is there.
All right. Well, let's back up and punt for a second though. All the, cause we're speaking a lot on, on a focus area that's listed as number four. All right. So I think what, one of the things we probably should do is our, our focus areas, one, two, three and four in the order that we want to hook them on.
Well, they're, they're, they're just, they're not in any particular order.
Right.
I guess the first question is, do we like these as, uh, the focus areas?
Yeah.
Mayor, when you, when you're asking within the scope, I'm going to make sure I understand it.
Sure.
All this stuff is, is necessary, but it would take, it would take a group of 500 to every little thing to start. And, and then a subgroup to work on. You know, when you say within the scope, is it, is the scope what we can actually accomplish? Is that what you're saying?
It, it's what, what is this relatively new committee see its mission as in order to? If our, if our mission is to improve economic development for Nottoway County, would, how does, where, where do we want to draw the, uh, draw the clear lines?
Right. This chair, look, have me out here. I like the term often. Steve won these. I want to see a win. Okay. We haven't seen really, we hadn't had a win in a while. When I say we in WI, women are. We joined the alliance, Virginia Alliance Group and we sent this guy on all these trips and brought back nothing. When you say, when we say marketing, you said we're marketing. I, I know y'all picturing, hey, marketing is we, we put on internet and I don't know.
Yeah.
I was picturing soon or later, and, and I'm just, you, you, so just don't get upset with me, put this guy on a damn airplane and go ahead and telling people about it.
Right.
But I don't know how you do that. You know, I don't know. Is it a conference somewhere or is it, you know, you, you with me still? I mean, if, if we just market and stay here, we market, market, market. How do we tell the rest of the world?
You're not talking about advertising local. You're not talking about advertising region. You're talking about ad- advertising nationwide.
The trend shows.
Yes, right. But what I'm, right. Let me tell you what's happening.
Our economic development. You. Need to develop a relationship with the state, economic development. That has to be done. We've gotten industry at Nottoway. We've, we've successfully, FSC has been one of the best and then we've had show best and we've had, uh, Blackstone was a guy that, that, we're about something. I, I'm still trying to figure out that one, how to prove that that got away. Um, we've done it, but there is no reason that once you develop this relationship, they're going to plant you in the way. And plant these industries in.
They have, they have recently. We just don't have what they want, like the, um, like a site ready building or natural gas. Cause that developed a good relationship with Emily, um, with, uh, BDP. And it's, we talked to her about, you know, our deficiencies. I mean, we always taught, you know, bleed off of our strengths. And then I get a call from someone from BDP and they'll say, hey, we're looking for X, you know, a site. And I go, okay. Last one I got was after the, uh, natural gas, uh, propane. It was, they wanted 25,000 square foot building.
Okay. So, so that. Exactly.
That's right.
Focus area number one.
Right. So it's like you gotta put a shell building out there.
Yeah.
A natural gas, why have they'll do much about? But, but some kind of shell buildings will come, people can come in. Basically what we did was switchgrass. That, that, that they, we had this building and then he started utilizing it. Now he wants to buy it.
Well, we have to have something.
Now, now's another way I'm looking at that too. Lunenburg built a shell building in the industrial farm. That stayed vacant 20 years. What we do and we've done in Nottoway County, particularly in crew industrial farm. Just when a company comes to us and say, we need this, we'll deal you the shell building. And that's what we did in, in crew with travel river and some of the others. But I just wouldn't build a, a shell building and expect somebody, they have specifications is what I'm trying to get at.
You'd be more, you'd be more clever if I'm, if I'm reading you right to say if it's, if it's, um, prepared to fall as ground ready, utility ready, and let them determine what structure they want.
Yes.
If it's open ground.
But what scares me.
Better to have a, a, a pad site, uh, shovel ready than to overbuild or underbuild a building. You kind of, I think you're shooting in the dark. I'm not criticizing Lunenburg.
No.
But, but the track breaker speaks for itself, you know?
When I went to Greensville, they had a shell building up. And I think, I was there seven years. I think year six, they finally got somebody into that shell building. However, that shell building, I will say this, that shell building attracted somebody else who said, you know, we don't like the building, but we love the site. So they bought the next lot over. Okay. And Brian, they needed a rail spur. So you gotta be ready that.
We'll see what scares you.
Laid their appetite.
Right. But what scares me is, let's just be honest with each other. We had a, not a shell building, but a bowling alley. Sitting there, sitting there, sitting there. And I don't want to see that shell building like that bowling alley. Yeah. I, I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm saying, once you put infrastructure, you gotta get aggressive. You can't just let it go. Well, we got it done.
They kicked us up another tier though, uh, on BDP scale. You know, they have four, four tiers, I believe. I think that pushes to three or four. And then that's when we start.
So, so this, so, so this is where you put this information in with, with Virginia. What is it called?
You can, uh, Virginia.
And they start grading you.
Yeah.
I think, I think we'd be better off to overcome this natural gas. And when I say that is what I'm just saying, um, be able to, be able at the most of a service to replicate it as best we could. You know, instead of just, you know, and I'm not criticizing us, but I'm saying, well, we don't have natural gas. Next.
How do you get it?
You know?
There's no, no way. Thank.
Right. Then if we can't have natural gas, hey, but we, we, we've got tropical propane, whatever. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
But I mean.
With the next thing posted to natural gas.
Yes.
What does it do in front? What does it mean compared to price?
Very close. I, 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 I looked into this for place, for the, for the, the place in brochure. Propane and natural gas are very, very close in price. The difference is natural gas gets brought to your doorstep. Propane has to be trucked or tankered in. And that's where it's, it's the transportation. It's the delivery cost.
All right. Can we just make, go ahead and just take care of this one item then? Let's find out where natural gas is and what it takes to get it here. Just, just simply just knock that one out and we have it in front of us and it's either lower, we just can't. Or either, let's think about it now. Let's broaden out now. You, you got this chicken integrated thing. It might be a wonderful thing. We can start looking at a regional outfit baby to bring in natural gas. See what's that? See what it takes to get you.
To, to answer that in, in, in a, one way, the, um, Dominion tried to bring in a natural gas line through Nottoway County about 10 years ago. I don't know if anyone remembers that. Okay. Um, and anytime you try to bring in a new natural gas line, it's a huge process because there's a lot of pushback, uh, from environmentalist groups and, and things like that.
And it didn't help the, the, the line blew in Alpha Max. Y'all remember that?
Yeah. Right.
Yeah. You remember made that giant crater? That did not help their, their mission.
Yeah. So I, I want to say that that, is that project officially dead?
I think it is.
It's, it's dead, but it's upkeep.
Dominion has paid for right of ways.
Right. And they're doing the upkeep.
If that ever gets revived, definitely buying a tap, but even the tap was something like one or $2 million for the tap. And then it's like, uh, it was, uh, something like a million dollars per mile for, uh, for a line. For the, for the last mile.
Well, then we need to figure out how can we be the propane king, you know? I don't see how we can ever bring, we can't make natural gas, not a work. I mean, let it go. We need to figure out what we can do for people.
Right. What's the next best thing?
Man, if it's, if it'd be $250 million to get a, a tap in, in one of our industrial sites, you never return, you never return investors.
Well, and that's the reason why I say that it, it's like if, if nothing else, if, if we can gather the information, then we know. And we say, okay, it's not viable. It'll never be viable, not at least for the next 10 years, decade, ain't going to work, but then go back to propane.
Sounds like never say never.
Without saying, we ain't gonna say no, but maybe in 10 years revise and take a look at it. But did I see something somewhere about propane storage and something that looks like a war towel?
No, I, that's what I was mentioning earlier, a bolt storage fund, just like, uh, in, uh, Western Bedford, they did that with, with the gas line and stuff like that. And that's always a possibility is just to bring tankers in, you know, fill it up or something like that. I mean, it's just a suggestion, but I think that's one way to, you know, uh, intermediate.
We could, we could. I'm gonna stick my foot in my mouth, but we can go so far as figure out how to do tax abatement to, to help with a storage facility. We just can't, we can't just sit here and say, well, we don't have natural gas. We're not going to move. Figure out a way to get around.
Don't tell me no, tell me how.
Right.
And then we can make a decision.
Well, al- also the, you, you know, just to, uh, the natural gas point again. There are other lines. Um, I, there's ones, uh, near Brunswick, I want to say, or that's being planned near Brunswick. There was a, uh, news article about that happening, same one. Um, what we would need to do is find out where the closest one is or where the nearest one is and see what it would take to get a tap into that. I mean, in order to pay for it, and this is just me thinking out loud, we'd probably have to figure out some way to get it to residential homes too. Um.
They have to have so many customers.
Cause you're up in the.
Right. Exactly.
Even if you have the tap, you got it.
Exactly.
But I, when we met with, um, Representative Goode and, uh, Lor and, um, Merrick and all them out of the site, um, I called up, uh, to ask the current provider and the, I mean, the nearby provider in there out, I think, or near Petersburg or something like that. Then you also have the plantation, I think is, that may be the plantation, but we have one. And they're doing maintenance on it. I think on the west side of the county, if I'm not mistaken, north or west.
Yeah. The line's not there. It's, it's the easements that they're.
Right. But the thing is, is that we're talking, you know, 30 miles or so for something like that. And if it's a million dollars a mile.
I mean, you mentioned one in Brunswick.
Uh, I, I remember reading articles about uh, issues related to the natural gas line being proposed to run through Brunswick.
I can, there's a federal site I can look at.
Yes. Where they getting the fuel for, um, Dominion's plant on 58 between the four.
You asked a question.
Where is that? Where is it?
It comes off of that.
If you don't know about it in the committee, but I can tell you what.
I was, I was with Buddy because he's from Brunswick and he can access the, uh, pipeline, uh, data information.
So it comes through Mecklenburg. So Williams, Williams Pipeline, it used to be Trans, Trans something, Transco. I can pull up the map too. I, I keep that in the hazmat files here. Um, it comes through where CMH in South Hill is. They, they ran it right through, crossed on the 138. It goes by that cemetery before you get to Love's Truck Stop in South Hill. They just ran the new line through there. So what the deal is, we ran parallel lines. So the right of way was there all these years. When I was a kid, we used to hunt on it. Um, the line goes all the way down to like the Broadnecks area from there, from South Hill. Crosses over, goes under the Maher and rubber. Actually they toned it under the rubber. And it comes in, there's another line there, and then it carries parallel in the greens. They tapped into Dominion for the 58 plant. So they were able, they, they, uh, the Lawrence Brick, which is one of the largest brick manufacturers in Virginia, does all the kills off of the natural gas.
That's right there next to the Scott's plant.
That's right. Right next to the Scott's hyponex plant. And so all of that has that gas line. That's what helped them on that, on that.
It don't, it wasn't just Dominion. It was the, the company.
Brick plant was asked, uh, Steve, right before the Dominion came.
Right. Well, Buddy, wouldn't a, uh, a, a huge propane storage facility, wouldn't that be the great asset for emergency services as well in case of like a major ice storm or something like that?
It really would. And Synergy had one, um, uh, just down near the community college. And then I think Ellington had one over here in Blackstone. I believe it's still here. When you have those large, I believe it's 30,000 cylinders, um, two good examples of what you're talking about. Southside Virginia Community College, when they built the new workforce centers, they didn't have LP gas. I mean, they didn't have natural, so they put in a lot of tanks and they put it behind a privacy fence. And the other one is Regional J. The Regional J O down that way, um, for Dinwiddie, Mecklenburg, Brunswick. They didn't have natural gas either. So they put in a huge amount of tanks and just went behind. So that was the alternative fuel because they needed gas.
And that goes back with Ben and Sam, was to be the propane king. You hadn't said that before to him.
That's right. There's lots of quantity of propane.
And I, I like the idea. We, we just want to check with BEDP to make sure that that's something that some of these prospects would be interested in, in, or if they're just saying, no, we want natural gas or nothing. Um, but I do like the idea.
And we can call it natural gas on the spell. The right next mail. I mean, that's what, that's all.
I mean, it's cheating a little bit.
Yeah. The propane works.
What am I asking you?
Okay. Well, I mean, if we're, if we're good with the, uh, focus areas, I'll meet with you, with the subcommittee and we can start coming up with some, uh, some, uh, more specific goals and, uh, and strategies, uh, uh, based on these focus areas.
What date do you want to feel?
Let me, uh, yeah, let me pull my calendar here.
But again, I gotta say again, we need a win, y'all.
We do.
Right, right. We do. I, I mean, all right. So, you might, you might not answer. So what's Les Stone doing with their new core that gave us so much? The, with all these public hearings and they were supposed to start working that?
We're still waiting on the, uh, the approval processes and things like that. I think.
It's going through DQ right now.
DQ.
Okay. See, that's things I don't really know. Did it stop? Did somebody kill it? Did they have any timeframe on groundbreaking? Because they need to build a rail spur and stuff.
They, they bet, they, I can't remember how long ago it was, but not too long after I got here, they asked for a meeting with Ms. Simmons because it's her district and there must, I just talked to a couple of people. They, they probably eight people into the office. And, uh, they told us that they just, you know, one meet and greet just goes heads up that they're ready to start. And, uh, they told us that they just, you know, one meet and greet, just goes heads up that they're ready to start, we're all living on the process. And, um, they've been in communications, great a little bit about the DEQ permits. So if they're, if they're going through DEQ, it's, it's, it's gonna be a while, but they're still here, they're still going. I, I get the clear, clear impression they're gonna do the project, um, but.
How was the, uh, next Thursday and the, um, first?
We got a budget hearing.
Got a budget hearing?
No, it's that Sunday here, isn't it?
Public budget here, public meeting.
Because we have. Budget hearing on the first, your work session on the eighth.
Meeting.
Regular meeting on fifteen, fifteen, this one over there. We actually got a Thursday off, cause it's five in this month, myself.
Bear with me while I.
Don't tell Sean. Thursday night off.
Actually, you want to think about it, we may have gotten a win. Let Torbore maybe was canceled tonight.
Just pretty much go.
I'll be getting some messages here.
Yeah. The week of the fifth?
July the fifth?
Um, well, uh, hold, I'm sorry, bear with me, um.
Oh, Mr. Vaughn, I think this was just for.
So, uh. I mean, I could do, uh, thirtieth to thirty-first.
Wait a minute, what, what?
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, May, uh, I can do next week on Tuesday or Wednesday. Uh, or I can do.
This is subcommittee.
I'm good on, I'm good on either one of those.
Tuesday, Wednesday would be fine.
Subcommittee, so, I love it.
Um, let's do.
What time you get off at seven?
I get off at six.
What's it, six thirty?
Six thirty on Wednesday at the, um, Crew Airport.
Okay, that sounds good.
Bring in a pizza.
Bring it, bring it back up that.
Is that a thing now?
Me here, you get worse.
Barely.
You want, you want me to come?
Um, you don't have to, but if you want to, you're, you're always welcome.
What time?
Uh, six thirty?
Next Wednesday, thirty first.
I don't think that's a bad idea, Ray.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, we can use your, your expertise, especially since you'll be charged with executing all this.
Might give you, I mean, never know, might give you the lead in on something here.
Right, and do you like your, uh, you know, you brought some, uh, some good points on. Some strategies.
You, are you zooming in now?
Like, you're talking about, like, going back to Luxon, you mentioned, buddy, about the, the pipeline going on the river. What amazed me, I, I did go down and look at Luxon, um, in Goochland, they, the quarry is lower than the James River. And that dude is not, is right beside. In other words, quarry, you down in a hole, and you looking up at the James River, which is kinda spooky. Like if something happens, all the waters in the James River would just go into the hole and just fill up.
The mannequin ones, just. Things where the headquarters.
Right, right.
That's the one that has the crane in it?
I believe so.
It's crane in a bus or something like that. They actually, crane, they hit a vein, I believe it's sealed in. Was that the one down?
I just think it's spooky.
No, 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 no. This, what I'm thinking is probably. Cause it's not that far, man, like you throw, I mean, you know, it's close, very close.
Just because there is gonna be pizza, so you're pulling out this, buddy, you're pulling out the.
I had.
We know, we talk to you, Phil.
So, Mr. Bowen, in my last job, we had an opportunity, I had an opportunity to go into a working coal mine.
Oh, wow.
And entering in, and damn, underneath the river.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Could you hear the river, get to where the?
You could not, you couldn't hear the water, but you, we, it was, it was tunnelled in under a river, and then they were working that back face.
Well, what's the, uh, what's the road you go down, or Southwest Virginia, and you go through, uh, through a mountain, they cut a, uh, cut the road through?
Seventy-seven?
I think so.
Yeah, seventy-seven, yeah.
I saw that in Arkansas, I mean, I hadn't been to one.
And there was one point where it was easier to drive to, to get from, like, I can't remember exactly. One part to get back into Virginia is quicker to go through West Virginia.
Yeah, and, and Tennessee, like Gate City and stuff, parts in cold, in the cold country. You had to go out to through Tennessee and then come back up.
All right, so if you click on any of those dots like that would willing give you the, willing give you their. That's, that's the one in South Hill off of Chapico, uh, Road, so it goes right up under that. And when, you know, when you go down Chapico Road in South Hill, it cuts right under there and goes right up to Love's Truck Stop. And then it shoots on that toward Greensville, so it just runs through, it runs through Brunswick. And these, these are all natural gas and not anything liquid? This is all natural gas right here, these are, these are your main, um, you know, businesses. You got the one in, uh, you got the one up here in, in the general area of, uh, Alphamatics. But it's not showing you any course, it's just.
Those are all the pump stations.
There's a pump station, so it runs from Alphamatics on down through, comes through South Hill, and then what happens, this is the main one from Williams, which used to be Transco. And then what it does is, this comes off of, uh, South Hill and runs under, uh, fifty-eight and goes on down. Uh, to here, to where the power plant is over here.
All the way around us, doesn't it?
If I can get the map, I can bring the map, but I can ask Susan to help generate a map, that's just where the lines are and, and. Relation to where we are.
What would it take to tap into that?
Well, that's, that's the question that you all are asking us to find out is, to go, go to someone, I've got a couple of notes here on making some follow-up phone calls. And see if we can.
Like you said, at least with that, anybody who comes and asks that question, whether they walk into Blackstone, Burkle, or Call the County, they say. Where's natural gas? How far have you researched it? We can at least say, yes, we have, even though it may not be a viable option, we can answer them yes. And, and then we can quickly go and say, but by the way, what do you think about investing in propane tank here?
Yeah, so.
And.
Because of that.
From the residential side, isn't that cheaper than the electric or propane?
I think it's cheaper than a fuel oil, I believe. Talking natural gas?
Yeah.
Natural gas is very prevalent from where I'm from originally. It's the cheapest, most economic and safest way to heat your house.
Okay, I mean, it, that's another argument for investing, is for the residential, uh, making.
Do something that's not just driven by commercial, but residential improvement, quality of life.
Right, exactly.
The problem with natural gas is that it. The environmentalists give it a bad look because it's gotta be drilled out of the ground. You know, similar to coal, everybody's. But yet we watch trains all day long run right by or taking coal to other countries.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Speaking of that, this is off the subject, we just put a new roof on my building, and, and Roofal, when we go up there. He stuck his finger down there far and didn't find the bottom of the coal dust on top of my. Just blew my mind, just deep in the dust, coal dust.
Put a train, come, trains come.
Well, and you just gotta get your vacuum every once in a while.
We still have some COVID facing us, we're trying to get rid of.
Well, we know where to send the people for, uh, uh, community service, I think, get in trouble. All right, um. Next one's meeting? Looks like Thursday, June twenty-second, seven PM. It'd be the fourth Thursday. There are five, but I'm not coming twice next month, John, sorry. Steve, you available twenty-second of June?
Oh, yeah.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, entertain a motion for German.
So moved.
I thought he was gonna jump on it. Motion to the second, all in favor, signal saying aye. You wanna pose? Look, I was just concerned with, full disclosure, I've seen him when Greg sent it to me this whole, this afternoon, and I didn't want to make him.